Okay, thank you. Welcome to tonight's meeting, August 17th, for the Gardner Zoning Board of Appeals. You can see we probably have a-
Nobody can hear you, Chair.
Please?
Nobody can hear you.
Okay.
Consider yourself lucky.
Okay, welcome to tonight's zoning board of appeals meeting, August 17th. We do have an active agenda, but before we begin the hearings, I'm going to go over the ground rules by which this board operates under. Is that better? A little bit more? Okay. In Gardner, three members of the zoning board of appeals must be present to conduct a legal hearing. Applications will normally be heard in a sequence in which they appeared in the public notice. The board is under no obligations to adhere to that sequence. All hearings shall be open to the public, and no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be a hindrance to the workings of the board. An applicant may appear in his or her own behalf or be represented by agent or attorney. The applicant or his or her representative shall present the case to the board. The app- the, I'm sorry, representatives of the city shall be heard, butters to the property present at the hearing shall be heard, and any other interested parties present shall be heard. Those in opposition to the hearings will be heard. The board must render its decision regarding variance request within 100 days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board regarding special permits must conduct a public hearing within 65 days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board must render decisions for special permits within 90 days after the closing of the public hearing. All members of the board, all three members, must vote in favor of the variance or special permit for it to be granted and approved. The right to appeal the decision is provided for in the zoning act. The information is available in the office of the city clerk. The need for supporting the variance or special permit rests with the applicant or agent of the applicant. The board requested each person identify themselves as to name and address before addressing the board. Sitting on tonight's hearings is to my right Randall Haglund, third member; to my left, Michael Gary Clark, and myself, Ray LaFond, as chair. The meeting is being taped. Is there anyone who objects to the taping of this meeting? Be it noted that no one is objecting, also that if any documentation, reports, et cetera, are being submitted to the board, they will remain with the board. So either a copy needs to be provided before the original cannot go back, if that's the only document that will stay with the board. Okay. Now, as I stated early on, we're no one under no obligation to adhere to the sequence in this, which was in the paper. I am going to move it, one, because we have a very large audience tonight, and the two cases that I'm going to call first are- just let me get them in order. Okay, and I'm going to call them together, because the applications are almost identical. Case 2021-08-31, variance, Harbor Classic Homes, Zero Clock Street, Open Space Development. Application to construct and access for the proposed open space residential development, PID M32-6-10, Clock Street entrance, located in General 3 Residential Zoning District, GR3, and Single Family 1 Zoning District, SFR1, is denied as does not comply with Chapter 675, Attachment 1:1, Table of Uses, Number 10, Open Space Residential Development of Gardner City Code. The zoning code states that your requested use is nonpermitted or is a nonpermitted use in GR3 and SFR1 zoning districts. Second case I'm calling, case 2021-08-04, Harbor Classic Homes, Zero Century Way, Open Space Development. Application to construct and access for the proposed open space residential development, PID M37-21-42, Century Way entrance, located in General Residential 3 Zoning District, GR3, is denied as it does not comply with Chapter 675, Attachment 1:1, Table of Uses, Number 10, Open Space Residential Development of City Code of Gardner. The zoning code states that your use is a nonpermitted use in GR3 zoning district. Agent or attorney are applicant for those two cases. Okay, please state your name.
My name is Laurel Adams, and this is my partner, Ronald Quigby, and we're here from Harbor Classic Homes. We are, that's our company, and we're getting ready to close on that course soon. And our attorney would like to have Ben here, but he's separating the arrival of his first grandson in Texas. So we're going to do the best we can in this step.
Okay, we may be able to give him an opportunity. The board is going to propose to you, as the agent for the applicants, two choices. First choice, first of all, that both applicants are incomplete in being prepared. They lack a lot of required information. So the board is going to give you a choice, one, is ask for a continuance to another month to move forward with this and give you an opportunity to complete the application properly, or we can, the board can move forward with the applications you have submitted here, and the board can work on rendering a decision just from that information. So that's your choice. And the next meeting, because of members are not going to be here, will not be in September, it would be in the October meeting. So I'm going to give you an opportunity tonight and within the next couple of minutes, because we have a heavy caseload to move forward. Depending what you do, if you choose to ask for a continuance, then anyone associated with those two cases from Century Way may go. I mean, you can stay and listen to the rest, that's okay, but you don't have to stay, you can leave, and it will, you'll see the notice out when it's going to come in October. So would you like five minutes to think about this?
So if I could ask, just to, for clarification, you were saying that the board has found our application is presently lacking some information?
Correct.
Is that the kind of information that I can answer questions about tonight, possibly?
No. One is, you need to substantiate claims that are made in the application. The board cannot provide you that information to help you make that claim. You have to dig up the evidence to support the claims that are there in, and then present them to the board.
Okay, and are they related to the existing zoning or to the-
Well, you said they're related to the existing zoning ordinance and the uses that the application wants to go forward with. If they were not in violation of the zoning ordinance, you wouldn't be here. So the application really is lacking a lot of critical data, and that's really the prerogative or the responsibility of the applicant to provide that data, to convince the board that they should vote and move forward in what has been presented they want to do.
So I have, I have an outline of our request, and as I understand it, there are three criteria that the board uses to determine whether or not to grant a variance. I also know that a lot of people have come today to really kind of find out what is going to happen here and how to, how to best address the property. And so I wondered if you would like to see the outline that our attorney has provided, and then perhaps you can help me determine whether or not a continuance would be the way to go, or what do you think?
I think it's very simple. I'm going to deny you submitting that information, because we have not had an opportunity to look at it. It would be a shotgun approach for us to have it tonight, to look at it, think about which way we're going to go, and then the presentation would not be proper at that point. So I think it would be best, you make the decision, either to continue to October, or say, "I definitely want to go forward with what I have," and that's what the board's going to work with.
And earlier you said that I might have five minutes to make that determination. Is that still on?
I'll give you five, and we'll take a five-minute recess to allow her to make that decision.
We can take a couple other cases.
I will start, I'm going to start another case.
Yep.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay, for everyone here, then, at this point, I'm going to turn over the chairmanship to Randy Haglund, because I did not sit on the case, that he's going to speak and present, and he will take it from there. After that, then I will assume chairmanship again for the remaining cases. Would I just sit?
Yeah, you can sit here.
Okay.
The next case tonight, it's case number 2020-0903. It's a variance, Brenda Erickson, 18 and 19 Ashley Drive. It's regarding furniture. It's an application to construct a single-family home at lot 18 and 19 Ashley Drive, parcel ID number W2212-61, and it's located in a rural residential 2 zoning district, and it was denied because it did not comply with Chapter 675, Article 620, Article 2:1 of the City Code of Gardner. The board previously voted on this case and established a number of conditions. One was that the single-family lot may be constructed from combined lots. Pins must be set prior to lot, issuance of building permit, and the lot cannot be subdivided. And I'm going to call this case, Brenda Erickson, agent or attorney. Mr. Mossman?
Chris Mossman from Trowbridge Engineering. And basically what we're here for tonight is to ask for extension. You guys had a hearing back in September of last year. Shortly afterwards, the Ericksons discovered that the city floodplain maps indicate that the whole lot is in the floodplain. And so I was hired to take a look at that situation and find out where the floodplain actually is. So it's been kind of a complicated process, trying to find benchmarks, doing a bunch of survey work, but I have come up with a plan that indicates that a portion of the property is above the hundred-year floodplain, and that's been submitted to FEMA. We're going to try and get what's called a LOMA F amendment, a map amendment from them. And the amendment for the application is with FEMA, but it's probably going to take at least 30 and possibly 60 days to find that out. The variance was good for a year, so we're here to ask for a variance to be on the safe side, and it will still take us some time, even if we got the LOMA, to be able to get a building permit and all that stuff together, too. So hopefully you guys would consider granting us an extension for another year. And I believe my client Brenda Erickson sent you a letter documenting some of the things we went through trying to figure out this hour.
She do, and I can read it into the record.
Okay.
Thank you. This was a request of variance extension, and it was addressed to the Gardner Zoning Board from Brenda Erickson, who is the applicant trustee, Dennis D. Gagnon Trust. Again, it was case number 2020-0903, it was lot 18 and 19 Ashley Drive, and it is dated July the 19th, 2021. And it says, "As trustee of the Dennis D. Gagnon Trust, I am requesting an extension for the variance that was granted by the zoning board on October 20th, 2020, to construct a single-family resident at lot 18 and 19 Ashley Drive, Gardner, Mass. Following approval of the variance, I was informed of the issue presented by the fact that the lot is located within a flood zone according to the existing FEMA flood zone map. Despite diligent effort to address this concern, it has not been resolved, not yet been resolved, and necessitates this request for an extension. Outline below are the events that have transpired thus far with regard to the variance and the work that has been performed since the granting. On, number one, on August 3rd, 2020, I received notification from the building commissioner that my application for construction of a single-family home at lot 18 and 19 Ashley Drive was denied as it did not comply with the current 100-foot zoning frontage requirement. Number two, on August 18th, 2020, an application for variance was filed with the zoning board by attorney Christine Tree. On my behalf as trustee of the Dennis D. Gagnon Trust, the application requests a reduction in the frontage from 100 feet to 40 feet. Number three, the hearing was held on September 15th, and the zoning board members concluded that a site visit was needed. Case was left open and continued to the October 20 meeting. Site visit was held on September 3rd, 2020. At the October 20 meeting, the board voted to approve the variance request with three conditions: one single family home in the lot, pins must be set, and the lot cannot be subdivided. Number five, the copy of the decision is filed with planning board and city clerk on August, on October 28th, after the 20-day period for appeals. The variance was recorded, which is a registry of deeds, on November 25th, 2020. It is in book number 63842, page 281. Also in November, ZOC surveyors was contacted to set the pins as required by the conditions. On October 28th, 2020, they confirmed that all the lot corners were located and staked. The record plan to show the found pins or set pins was updated. Again, it's in plan book number 564, Plan 26. On December 3rd, 2020, the building commissioner informed me by phone that lots 18 and 19 was located in the flood zone, and as a result, a building permit could not be issued. Number nine, after exploring our limited options for this nearly two-acre residential lot, a decision was made to consult with a civil engineer and explore the possibility of obtaining an amendment to the flood zone from FEMA. At the end of December, I contacted Trowbridge Engineering and spoke with Chris Mossman, who noted that the existing FEMA floodplain maps were prepared in 1984, and accuracies are sometimes found, given the advancement of GPS technology. He agreed to do some research and fieldwork to determine whether at least part of the lot may be in an elevation above the flood zone. Number 10, on January 2021, Mr. Mossman began examining existing documentation, but had difficulty finding benchmarks to tie in to the lot because documented benchmarks no longer existed. He also contacted city in Gardner, but was unable to find reliable information. Mr. Mossman concluded he would need to work with a surveyor who had GPS and could set an elevation using a satellite to give him the onsite benchmark he needed, and went to whether conditions caused delay, but by February 18th, the benchmark had been established. Mr. Mossman recommended that a TOCO survey be completed in order to determine whether a letter to FEMA requesting partial removal from the floodplain map was worthwhile, again, went to whether conditions caused delays. On April 1st, 2021, Mr. Mossman notified me that the TOCO survey had been completed, and there was significant elevation difference between the stream to the far left of the lot and the portion to the right of the driveway. Over the course of the next few months, heavy rains caused delay with some onsite work. Mr. Mossman was able to perform the additional survey work, completed a plot of the buildable area that was located outside the flood zones, and prepared the LOMA submission. On July 15th, 2021, Mr. Mossman notified me that the city engineer had signed the FEMA certification form required for the LOMA submission, and following a final meets and balance plan, the request would be submitted, and planning for the length of time it takes to receive a determination feeder, FEMA, excuse me, a decision was made to request an extension of this variance, prevent its lapse before building. I'd like to say, just for the record, that a variance requires action be taken within one year of the date of its issuance. Given the time and finances that have been expended on this pursuit, your kind consideration of this request is greatly appreciated. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. And Mr. Mossman of Trowbridge Engineering is also authorized to speak on my behalf regarding this matter. Signed, Brenda Erickson and Chris Mossman. Okay, any questions from the board?
No.
No? You want to, entertain a motion?
I've moved to entertain a motion to grant the extension.
Okay, the motion is made and seconded to grant the extension. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? None, one-year extension granted.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mossman.
Sir? You ready?
Yeah. You want to say anything? Okay, we've noted that one. You can go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Haglund now is turning over the chairmanship to me again. So now I will ask, have you made the decision?
Yes, we respectfully would like to ask for a continuance.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the board to vote on that.
I'm sorry?
I'm going to ask the board to vote on it.
So what was your?
She wants to do a continuance, or they want to continue. So do I hear a motion from one of my members to continue this, to, you think you'll be ready by October for the October meeting? Do I hear a motion to-
Still moved, second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Continued to October meeting. You'll note, Rachel will notify you of the date in October. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So going back to what I said, anybody that wants to say, may, if you're just here for the Harbor Classic Homes, you're free to leave. And we'll take a two-minute recess while the room empties out.
It may take more than two minutes.
Will we be notified by mail again the date, or is it posted?
It'll be posted in the paper. But I want to discuss that with Rachel. I think it's important enough, I think we're going to try and do a-
October 19th?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
Do a good day.
Roland will sell us tickets.
Oh, I'm going to ask you to do the O3, so I didn't mean to go final. I'm going to turn over the O3, ready to go? Okay, I'm going to turn the chairmanship over to Mr. Haglund again, because he is going to handle the next case. He'll call it, and the board will take the information and move forward.
The second case this evening is case number 2021-0602. It is a special permit. The applicant is BCF Group Incorporated for a property located at 75 Oak Street, Gardner, Mass. It's an application on behalf of BCF Investments, LLC, and it's to operate a three-family unit at 75 Oak Street, parcel ID M272457, and it's located in the General Residential 3 Zoning District. It is denied because it did not comply with Chapter 675, Attachment 1:1 of the City Code of Gardner. The code states that your use, number four, three-family dwelling, requires a special permit in the general residential 3 zoning district. I'd like to mention that this is a continued hearing from two months ago. Correct? I think it was two months ago.
Yes.
Two months ago. So the members sitting on this case are Member Gary and Member Cornet. Attorney Tree.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I would like to congratulate you on making a good presentation for us here, and you just did a perfect job. I do have to commit to the monitor behind me, so I'm just going to talk to you.
I don't know, is that, can we knock that fan down, speed or something? I think that's draining a lot of voice. Very tired. Appreciate it, thank you. Better?
Much better, thank you.
You're welcome. It's better for me, too. Attorney Tree, why don't you give us like the Cliff Noe version reminder of kind of what this case is about for those people, and is a reminder for all of us, I guess?
This is a property at 75 Oak Street with an existing three-family dwelling on it. The request is for a solution to it. This is a property that was foreclosed upon, and during, after the foreclosure period, being abandoned, once abandoned, it's lost its protected use status as a pre-existing nonconforming use. The applicant, BCF, through Mr. Furtado as manager, is requesting to resume the use as a pre-existing. And at the last meeting, we did put through a presentation where we addressed all of the special permit criteria. It's the GR3 district, so it does require a special permit for a three- or four-family dwelling. The structure is nonconforming, but pre-existing nonconforming, it's been in existence for more than two years, any dimensional issues on that regard are not subject to review at this point in time. The concern of the board at the last meeting was the parking. So this is a picture of the property right there. It has an existing driveway on the left-hand side. It's a single car width. It could fit three cars, I think, comfortably, but the board was uncomfortable with the, having a three-family with one driveway with tandem parking. And the municipal parking lot was not quite available for this use, particularly during snow emergency. So we took that time to look for an alternative solution. The two things that we looked at were constructing the driveway to the right-hand side of the property, and leasing property from, leasing parking spaces from another property in the location. And we have made progress on both fronts, particularly on the leased parking. You can see the property at 11 Oak Street, which is the lower property.
This is the liquor store?
It's the liquor store. And Mr. Furtado has just finished speaking to the owner, who has agreed to lease four parking spaces for multiple years. I believe a five-year term is probably appropriate, but the owner indicated they would agree to up to 10. And that is, when I measured it, using measuring tools, 177 feet from the lowest. So it's certainly within walking distance. With four spaces there and two space, at least two spaces to the left of the property, we would be conforming as to parking. And then the only relief needed would be for the use, to grant the special permit for the use. Again, since Mr. Furtado has just finished having that conversation, I do have a lease document to present to you. But I would suggest that the board, I've dictated some of the terms that I think are appropriate. The board might want to consider having these spaces marked as well, but the board could condition its approval or the issuance of a building permit upon satisfactory review of the executed lease document. The lease document likely would need to be recorded because of the term in excess of one year, so we could have a recorded lease document satisfactory review by the building commissioner or by the municipal department of the city.
Excuse me, did you say that they would be marked spaces with some type of reservation for those apartments?
Yes, yes. So I, the applicant would accept that as a term of a satisfactory lease.
Is that just overnight parking, or is that, they could be here all day, or what are the thoughts of the parties?
Mr. Furtado, did you have a specific, you know, conversation?
Well, we said, you can park if you want, even for 10 years, but you don't tell me that place where should we park. Like you said, most of the park is empty for many, many years. Nobody parks, you just come here, buy some, you can park in the street on the side, which is a waste.
Well, I guess my question is, is it, should it be dedicated so that your tenants don't hazardly park to interfere with snow removal and things like that that could occur? That's, I think that's probably, you know, where the board and everybody was kind of going.
If you want to come to the mall, this, so everywhere you have to move a car, except because that would be, you know.
So I think I'm, because the lease is not yet written, I'm happy to take terms, again, that the board thinks appropriate, and certainly, you know, having a designated marked parking space.
Or park out of the way for, you know, for snow removal or whatever. Before we go too, too far, I just noticed that the 90 days is up today. May we be granted a little extension?
Yes.
On this?
Yes.
30 days sufficient, or you want to go 60, or?
I would, Mr. Furtado, of course, wants to get construction going by 45, which is the difference.
Okay.
And, you know, I'm, as soon as the lease is ready, I'm going to submit. And the 45 days is the grant for the, you know, longest length of time the board can go without submitting the decision.
Correct.
So if everything is in place before that, the part from the workshop. And Mr. Furtado, just so you know, that's not another meeting, that's just to issue the decision. The alternative is- The alternative is constructing a driveway to the right-hand side. We have spoken to a contractor, as I'm sure you know, engineering is out a while. So this constructing a driveway in the right-hand side will involve a curb cut. The plan would have to go through the city engineer. We have a reported plan, but the reported plan does not locate the house on the plan. So I have only the informal measurement that I sent somebody from my office up to take. It appears to be 16 feet towards the front of the street and as narrow as 10 towards the back. That might entail requiring a variance because there would be a five-foot setback. Obviously, it would require more time, more money, more engineering work to get to, for acceptance and dedication of parking. And even so, it would be a single car width long. The longest length possible, I think, is about 50 feet. And, and as you can tell, this is simply a Google picture with some lines on it, so it's not a thing. That is an alternative. Again, I would ask the board if they would be willing to grant the special permit pending submission and satisfactory review of the lease. If for some reason the lease does not.
I didn't mean an extension. I just thought, I was seeing this variance, the special news, 90 days after closing the deal. So I apologize.
Happy to grant an extension either way. So we would ask that the special permit be granted and the building permit not issued without satisfactory review of the lease, meeting specific terms that's been reported. If the lease does not work out, if ultimately the parties change their minds and do not come to an agreement, then we would need to come back before the board and request a modification where the parking would be provided by that driveway. But even though that parking is on-site, I, I believe it's less ideal than the leased parking at the off-site location.
I think the second driveway would also require an variance.
I think it's just too close to the boundary line.
Well, no, it's two, it'd be second driveway within 200 feet.
So I, I think there's, you know, there's a modification and you would probably require another application anyway. So I'm happy to answer any questions of the board.
I don't have any questions this time. Our biggest concern was relating to the parking. I'm gonna open it up to the audience, see if anybody has any questions or comments. Is there any representatives of the city who'd like to speak with regard to this application? Christian or Jean?
I'd just like to say that the, using the parking lot at the liquor store is a much better idea than adding another driveway to the side of the building, which would be, I mean, at best-case scenario, three cars on each side of the building, two different units on each side of the building. It's, it's a mess. Using that parking lot, provided that they have enough parking to lease out those four spaces, which we need to, we need to work out. And that it's dedicated to those people, I think it's a great solution. And as long as it's a condition of the building permit as the attorney has outlined, I have no issue whatsoever.
Thank you. Are there any other representatives of the city present who'd like to speak with regard to this application? Any other representatives in the city? Seeing none? Are there any abutters who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Are there any abutters to the property who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Are there any abutters who'd like to speak in favor? Is there anybody who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anybody like to speak in opposition to this application? Anybody like to speak in opposition to this application? Any other, anybody have any comments at all? Going once, twice? Members of the board? Site visit? No? No? Okay.
Trimmed by the parking lot and all that.
Yeah, I'd like to pick them up. I'd like to, yeah.
I'd like to arrange a site visit. Do we want to close the hearing?
Well, if you close it.
You can't take any additional testimony.
We can't take any additional.
Probably.
And, and should the, should the lease agreement fall through and we have to come back and talk about our second driveway? Then I, I think we have to keep the meeting going.
Do you want to go a couple months?
I would, I am proposing that the board make this decision without the lease agreement before. If that's not acceptable to the board, then I would, my, my client wants to be going on the project, so I would just use all possible time toward the next meeting. I hope September is not too.
Well, you could proceed with renovating two apartments.
Building commissioner would issue their renovations from the front of it to apartments in the remainder.
Hey, that's, obviously it's up to the building commissioner.
Not certain, I'm comfortable with that. I am comfortable with the, with the board providing conditions to appease the appellant's request. And if they don't provide us with what we need, then the building permit doesn't get issued, and I don't see a downside to this. I think the conditions need to be that the parking spaces are dedicated to the tenants and marked in some way. And we need to make sure that the, the liquor store has enough parking to provide those four spaces and still not create their own zoning deficiency, right? Other than that, I don't see a lot to consider, but certainly it's the board's wish.
I, I don't care either way. I mean, we have some time to make the decision. I'm not prepared to make a decision this evening, obviously. Now, once, once site visit. So what's the, what's your thoughts then on closing the whole hearing?
If we can set enough conditions, that's fine.
Mel?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just uncomfortable until, you know, I see the lease and really understand what the.
I don't think we should close it until the site visit's over.
If the board's not comfortable really about seeing the terms of the lease, they can certainly abide that by the next meeting, but I would ask for the board's guidance on what its talks are in terms of the lease, so they can be in the document.
Well, for me, I'd want it over the number of years. I guess my question is, if you're doing a five-year lease, what happens if the lease or something, does that then mean it becomes a two-family?
A possible way to draft a lease is a five-year lease with an extension based solely on the election of the owner of 75 Oak Street, so that they would have a concrete option to definitively have a 10-year provision. But the board is only comfortable, if the.
If I own the, if I own the parking lot, I wouldn't sign that. Because then you're, if something happens to the store and they want to change, you're kind of, your hands are kind of tied, but that's between your applicant, your, your client and the, and the package store.
If the board prefers a 10-years lease, the owner has indicated they're willing to give a 10-year lease. The lease would run with the land and due to the length of the lease, it would need to be on record at the registry of deeds. That would put a subsequent owner of the liquor store parcel on notice that they had to comply with the terms of the lease. A change in ownership would not terminate the lease on either part, because it would run with the, run with the land for 75 Oak Street and it would run with the land for 11 Oak Street.
I wouldn't, personally, I think a five-year is a bare minimum.
Why don't we extend the hearing to the September meeting? And in that interim, we'll have the site visit.
Yep.
Perhaps you can draft up some draft lease language. Doesn't necessarily, they can't come to terms and be assigned, at least some, some draft language might be. Be appropriate. Is that good?
Yep, it's good.
Okay, so we will continue this hearing to the September meeting, which would be September 21.
Would you board like to schedule the site visit?
Yes. What are your gentlemen's thoughts on the site? Mel, you're, you're flexible, right?
I am, every day's sad.
Life awryly.
I have Mel's calendar, too, so.
What day's good for your next week, Mel? Or it could be this week, too. It's still light in the evening, so we could probably do it after. Like six or later.
Wednesday or Thursday?
I can't do Wednesday, I can do Thursday.
I can do six o'clock, no later than.
Thursday?
Thursday.
Okay.
26, at six? No, thank you, Attorney Tree. Thank you very much. 26? Thank you, Attorney Tree. And I'll turn the chair back over to Mr. Lefarnes.
Thank you, Mr. Haglund. Okay, the next case. Oh, thank you. Before us is that of Joanne Tavano, Zero West Broadway, Open Space Development, case number 2021-08-01. Application to construct 32 multifamily units at Zero West Broadway, Gardner, Mass., parcel ID H17-7-1, located in the Commercial Two zoning district. C2 is denied because it does not comply with Chapter 675, Article 1:1, Number 5, multifamily dwelling of City Code of Gardener. The zoning codes, code states that your use requested is a not permitted use in C2 zoning district. Okay, agent or attorney?
I forgot you would have represented for this one.
Whenever the board is ready.
You ready, Randy?
Yes.
Okay.
We are here on an application for a use variance. The property is located at Zero West Broadway. It is a parcel that is located at the extreme end of 2A, right next to the border with Templeton. The parcel itself crosses over the border with Templeton. Mr. Lefarnes, do you have this packet with you?
I do, I'm here. Spent a lot of time with it today.
Hope it was an enjoyable read. So this parcel, the applicant is primed and oversight LLC, Joanne Tavano, who is over to the left at the end, is another manager of that LLC. They're looking to construct a 32-unit development. There are four buildings proposed on the site. One building would contain eight condominium townhomes. The picture right here is in your packet, but it's a visual representation of the exterior of those townhomes. The remaining three buildings would be apartment units. They would contain 24 dwelling units. The condominiums would be two-bedroom, one-bath. They would have a one-car garage and one parking space. The apartments would be either two-bedroom, one-bath, or three-bedroom, two-bath. And there are 47 parking spaces dedicated to the apartment units, including three handicap units. We've started out with a plan that had 48, I believe, because it's too limited, so we are a little bit under, but I believe we can simply modify the plan to add another dwelling unit. This is the started engineering drawing, showing the layout of the proposed development.
Could, maybe move the tripod to the other side of your podium?
I can, as long as it does not collapse on me. Good?
That's good, that's good.
And just to put it up here. That is what is on the, on the board detail. So just to give a brief tour, at the front near West Broadway or Route 2A, we have this building, which is the eight-townhouse condominiums.
And those were the buildings that you showed at the beginning?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And as you can see, each one has a dedicated parking space in the front, that is in front of the garage that is within the building. Snow storage is marked up here for this parking area. The remaining plan shows three buildings. These are the apartment buildings, one, two, and three. There are parking areas here, here, and here for these units. As I said, there's 47 spaces. We did maintain a 50-foot buffer around the entire project, which would leave all of the trees that are currently on the parcel intact. That's intended to provide a buffer between this project and anything else in the neighborhood. But as you can see at the bottom of this drawing, we can simply add another space in this parking room. The buffer strip is, again, to provide a buffer to the neighbors. It's not a dimensional requirement that we're trying to meet.
Yeah, but that's, I may ask a question right now. Where is the Templeton boundary line on that drawing right there?
Right here, there's a dashed line. That says Garter Town.
Now, if you're telling me that dash line, you can go back to that very colorful drawing. If we're going from 1:00 to 7:00, you're lying. Building for apartments?
It's one on the bottom, one on the top, so it's it.
Okay, but that is in Templeton?
Portion of it is in Templeton.
Okay, when you calculate parking, you calculated 47 parking places. I believe under the ordinance, if you read it, it should be 48.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not, I'm not gonna ask anymore on that one space yet, though. If you subtract the parking spaces that are in Templeton and you take out the living quarters that are in Templeton, what do you have remaining in Gardner in terms of living quarters and number of parking spaces?
So there would be subtracted seven or eight spaces.
Parking?
Of parking spaces, so let's say that would be less than 40.
So let's say 40.
And that would, out of 24 units, we would deduct six, so that would leave us with 18 units requiring 36 parking spaces.
On that?
On a side note on that issue, this is an application for a use variance, and of course, one of the issues that we have to address is what is the hardship? And the, both the statute and the board's defined. defined at the basis on which the hardship can be based. We are requesting a hardship, or stating that there's a hardship with this program due to both the topography, which is steep. We have a slide that I'm going to show you afterwards on that. But also on the fact that it is, due to the shape, the shape extends across multiple zoning districts in Gartner and across a municipal boundary. The building commissioner and I have had a discussion on some of the aspects this brings up. It's very interesting to me, but, you know, not necessarily great for property owners. But one of the questions that came up is, with the cross-municipal boundary, could we count parking across the boundary for this use and vice versa? Because the same thing is going to have to be protected to Templeton. And I did forward a case. I'm sure the building commissioner was too busy to read it this afternoon.
Unfortunately, that's true.
Absolutely. But there is a court case where this was addressed. And as long as the zoning ordinance does not specifically prohibit considering space in another municipality, it can be considered. I did take a brief look at Gardner's zoning ordinance and did not see anything specifically stating the definition of lot, lot area, or lot frontage required that the land be in Gartner. And the same thing with the dimensional table.
What does Templeton say?
The Templeton has an ordinance which is very similar to yours. And the same thing, there is no prohibition in their zoning ordinance on considering land in another municipality that's part of the same lot.
Are their parking requirements similar?
Their parking requirements are similar. It is a different zoning district. In the Templeton zoning district, the multifamily use is allowed by special permit. And it is R2 or R1. But I did include an excerpt from their zoning ordinance within your package. So, again, the challenges this parcel represents, it's mainly in the Commercial Two district and partially in the R2 district, and then partially in Templeton. And look at the zoning, this is... That is the actual use. But there is approximately six thousand square feet that is in R2. This is much easier ones to do. If you can see, there's a slightly different shade in the bottom triangle. Right here?
Yes.
That's the R2 portion.
You said six thousand square feet, roughly?
Six thousand, roughly six thousand square feet is in R2. And on the concept plan, the back building just raises the R2 district. So the lot is 4.461 acres, 3.351 are in Gartner, 1.11 are in Templeton. The frontage is 351.36 feet. The frontage is entirely in Gardner. I have had a conversation today with the city engineer, just confirmed that water and sewer are available at the street for Gardner. And that Gardner would not have a problem putting in the connection for all of the buildings, whether or not they cross the line over to Templeton. Gardner is willing to supply the water and sewer for that. As I said, the property does slope upward. So that is a topographical representation of the parcel. This being West Broadway. The grade is steep to here. And then it levels off a little bit up here. So when we're looking at a use variance, there are three criteria to be examined. And I'd be happy to go through those, but I'd like to pause and see if there are more questions on what the project contains. There are some amenities in there that we can go over. There's a dog park, there's a recreational area, there's a patio. We did provide our plan for snow storage and dumpster location. Dumpster screening would be provided in form of a vinyl fencing. The light is not marked with the luminance on this plan. And this is the same plan we started out with. The lights are marked here. But this will have to go through site plan review if approved. And a lighting plan would be drawn at that time. Certainly, lighting would be directed in order to reduce any light pollution to any neighbors.
I do have a question. You gave us a picture of the condos. I did not see one of the proposed apartment buildings. Do you have one?
I do not have one, but the style would be similar. There would be some differences because the picture designates a garage for each condominium. And that, of course, would not be there with the apartment building.
So the proposal would be comparable with the gables, et cetera?
I'll start at this point in time to go through the use variance criteria. So, the first criteria is that a literal enforcement of the provisions of the code would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to petitioner or owner owing to circumstances related to the soil condition, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. We have, of course, put together a substantial dialogue on this that you have received and completed your ledger. There are two issues here, as I said. The topography and the shape extending into multiple zoning districts and multiple municipalities. So, a steep slope is going to require some engineering and some, obviously, heavy construction work to make that a livable environment. You construct what you've seen as hard as the parking areas go.
Attorney Tree, now you address the old topography and the steep slope. Do you have what the slope is? Do you have the elevation lines that run through? And where the major impact gets to that?
Yes, so the elevation lines, so right here, we start going. It is a two-foot gradient between lines. And so if the entrance is here, there's going to be a steep slope upwards here to the entrance. And then again, where there are two-foot gradients, it continues upwards. At here, we're 1,006, here we're 1,008. And it continues to elevate. So the whole slope, this is the top, and it comes downwards, again, steeply unfortunate.
Yeah, you don't have an overlay show where the modeling unit's going to be. I mean, you can have an incline that goes up two feet, you know, but everything's going to be built here. And so up here is fairly level. You just have a deep driveway going in. I'm trying to, Attorney Two, how much site work is going to be? It might be just minimal where the residential structure is going to be. And the rest stays natural.
The... So certainly, the fifty-foot boundary, which is marked on here, is intended to stay natural, although here, there's obviously going to be some work to put in the entrance. Obviously, I don't have one on top of the other. I'd be happy to get you one, because I am sure that we will see you at another meeting on this issue. But that is a visual of how the structures would lay on that parcel. I am going to...
What is the elevation at the road?
The elevation at the road is between 974 and 972.
So that's about a thirty-five to forty-foot increase between the road and the top of it. Thank you.
So, the topography presents a challenge. The challenge is going to require some engineering, more or less engineering, depending upon the particular use of the property. Given that, and given the multiple layers of zoning and municipalities on the parcel, when I looked at what uses would be allowed in all three, so in C2, in R2, and in Templeton, it is a park, a recreation area, or a golf or country club. And that's it. Other than something that would be a municipal use or exempt education. So there's very little that is allowed by right in all three districts. And those three uses would not generate the kind of financial return toward the engineering necessary to put them in. In any of the exempt uses, of course, because the applicant is not a religious organization or school, it's not really appropriate or feasible for the applicant to do that. So that is where the hardship lies. I did, in the application, do a study for you of the C2 district in this area. And I'm going to show you hopefully a map and table. So this is a map showing the uses of the parcel, the compliant or non-compliant uses of the parcels in that C2 district. So, the C2 district extends over to the Otter River, which is the lady boundary to the right. The red uses are non-compliant uses. The green uses are compliant uses. The pink are non-used parcels. There are twenty-eight parcels in this district that are used. And of those twenty-eight parcels, five are compliant.
Five of seven?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Three, four, five, six, seven, that's all.
Five, six, seven, seven!
Thank you.
Are compliant.
Just for the record.
Thank you.
I do have a question for that, Mel. If you have seven that are compliant, and the remainder are not, do you know when the remainder came into existence?
So, I can tell you in one particular instance that's very relevant. This parcel right here, this obvious subdivision on Deer Hill Road, that is a subdivision of single-family homes that was created in 1987 while this was in the C2 district by Use Variants, rented and signed by Sharon Ray Lefon.
He was giving you homework, because I already knew that.
So I can say that, that, you know, when you look at the uses throughout this district, they're primarily residential. The ones that are compliant, there's a municipal office, animal control, that's compliant. There's a gym. There is a retail, City Electric Supply at 750 West Broadway, a bit out. But whether it's industrial uses or residential uses, C2 doesn't fit most of this district. You know, if I were redistricting, I would read as C1. I understand the desire of the city to preserve a commercial corridor, because it is Route Two A. And so the hope is likely that potential would be for commercial development on this corridor. If this were Comp 1 instead of Comp 2, it would allow for the residential uses now, but also the introduction of commercial uses as the demand progresses. But the board is not a redistricting authority. But this argument does go to the second criteria. And that criteria is that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or creating or aggravating a safety hazard. The uses, again, that could go in by right are few. And if the applicant chose to ignore the remainder of the parcel, you know, not have any use of what was in R2, not have any use of what was in Templeton, the uses that go in there by right are a hotel, a retail shop. And those uses do not fit in with the neighborhood. They don't. And I hope that I'm not here later on arguing for one of them to be allowed in Gartner. But obviously, it's single-family residential throughout this district. And so it would be very very much in furtherance of the public good, not only to put this parcel to use, increase the tax base. Certainly, with the development, there's going to be a lot of increase in tax base for this parcel. But it would be a better use of the parcel than the uses that are allowed by right. It would be less detrimental to the neighborhood, particularly, like I said, because we are leaving a buffer around the property to protect that single-family neighborhood that is next door. As far as safety hazard, the road in that area is straight. There are no disruptions. Parking, as I've said, is intended to be compliant, perhaps in the addition of one more space. We may need Mast dot approval at some point, because it is Route Two A, but, you know, we can address that with Mast dot. But there's no public safety hazard which would be created by this construction project. The final criteria is that the relief can be granted without derogating or substantially derogating or nullifying from the intent or purpose of the code. As I usually do, I've cited the paragraph on the intent of the zoning code. And one of the purposes of zoning is to put land to its most appropriateness. And I would argue certainly that a residential use is the most appropriate use for this parcel, despite what the zoning is. I would also point to Gardner's Gardner's plan, which I did cite in here, I lost. But Section 2.3.2 of the 2006 Plan does state that a mix of housing solutions is a desirable development for the city. So I did do a little research on this issue, and I will say right out, I am not a realtor. I do have a degree in economics, but I haven't put it to use in a long time. However, if you look at some of the data around housing in Gardner, our median income is forty-nine thousand, that's median household income, forty-nine thousand six seventy-nine, which is $4,139 a month. This is not in your packet. I'd be happy to submit a dialogue on it later, though. In general, if someone wants to purchase housing, it is recommended, and most lending guidelines say that you cannot devote more than 28% of your income to housing. So if a median-income family, a young family, is looking to buy a home in Gardner, great thing.
Although I don't know whether that's really, um, enforceable, there are some cases on that.
I would assume being a multifamily dwelling that the owner would pay the water and sewer bill anyways, and since the owner is going to be a taxpayer and gardener, we could certainly attach that tax bill.
But even with the under- with condominium conversion-
But condominium, condominium generally there's one million.
That's only down in the front, that's a multifamily building.
I understand what I'm saying, it could conceivably change.
They can't, they can't change it without coming back here.
Um, even, it's not the plan, um, I think we'd be happy to accept a condition in any variance, that it not be converted, although I know that there are cases on whether it's enforceable.
Okay.
But even in a condominium conversion, there's gonna, they're not gonna be owning the underlying land. Um, the underlying land is still going to be owned by the sole property owner. So you still have, you know, somebody-
And the fees charged is fees charged for water and sewer will be based on gardener fees, and even though they're living in Templeton.
Because gardener's providing the water and sewer.
Okay. Alright, so, let's see. The interesting thing that came up looking is you have one actress and egress, but on two A. Any thoughts on having a second? I'll say most likely an egress. If something happened and blocked two A, or blocked the entrance, how would your inhabitants get out? Either through the woods, with vehicles?
There is no street access back here. Um, we are here to, to welcome any thoughts on this plan, which is, which is preliminary, so that we can make an adjustment as appropriate. So, an adjustment would be to take the exit over to this, um, corner. We would be closer at that point in time to Deer Hill Park Road, so we'd be closer to another entrance and exit. Um, but there's certainly room. Um, we wouldn't have quite the fifty-foot property buffer, but there is room to put another exit. We'd have to address the appropriate permitting for that. Uh, like I said, it's your two A, so we may have a masthead permanent to give.
So I'm gonna go back and reference another decision that I signed off on, and it's down in, you know, west end of town, but they had a similar setup, a little bigger, but they had a dirt road going off to one side, it was not gated, and it was wide enough for emergency vehicles to come in and out with a knee deep, but also call it another escape route for the inhabitants if that was blocked off. So I mean, that's something to consider, with the applicant.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, let's see what else I have. You talked about your fifty-foot buffer, not big. When you've seen projects that have a hundred-foot buffer, still not big. If the board was to look at this and grant this, but added a condition that no, I'm gonna call no activity in terms of cutting, trees, brush, or leave it in its natural state of the fifty foot, as it is. Because fifty feet, you can open up pretty fast, and it's just a straight view shot through. So if it's, there's vegetation in terms of shrubbery, bushes, stone walls, trees existing, unless the tree is a danger, uh, you know, in terms of safety, I understand that, but in more. Fifty foot should give plenty of room not to have too many trees or entries at all. Do you think the applicant would be open to that?
I, I think the applicant would be open to that. Uh, the other possibility I can think of is that if brush creates a fire danger, such that the fire department would advise cutting, that would be another exception.
Right, and that would have to come from advising from the fire department, not that I think it's a brush danger, you know what I'm saying? Okay, well, that's something you can conform up with then. Now we'll just jump a little here, and your presentation talked about a dog park, half basketball courts, I'd say full, half whatever. What are the plans around any trash receptacles, dumpsters, hours fencing? If that's gonna be in play, then that should be detailed on the plan, or that probably is gonna happen. To have an idea.
And snow removal.
Mm-hmm.
And snow removal. Snow storage.
Mm.
Snow storage.
Snow storage is marked on the plan. Um, it's proposed here, here, and here. Um, dumpsters are proposed here. I, I believe that's a single dumpster for, um, the facility. And then, of course, the basketball court is right there, dog park is right there.
No, no.
So the condo people are gonna have to carry their refuse halfway across the property into the dumpsters?
It is, uh, it is a one dumpster proposal. Um, but again, I, you know, it's very convenient here, somewhat convenient here, a little less convenient here. Here, what we are dealing with is condominiums. It may be that, um, we're looking at normal trash pickup, because they are. But if they are not, then I would think that another dumpster closer to the condominiums would also be appropriate.
Yeah, but I think, I'm just saying too, if it's basketball courts, even a dog park, if there's lighting, there should be something showing lighting where it's located. Which direction the lighting is going, not towards the residential structures, but either way or straight down. If you're gonna, I'm just, I'm throwing some thoughts out, you know, hours of operation, you know?
It's, it's a, um, it's a youth intended activity for the basketball courts, so I would think that hours, um, ending at ten P M. would be appropriate.
Okay.
As far as the dog park goes, um, I, I think dogs don't keep themselves to hours, so I would expect some extension of hours or more.
Well, I know, I was gonna say, we can assume and think, but I've seen some decisions where we thought something was gonna happen and come back. No pun intended, to bite us, you know?
So, the applicant can make a proposal that hours be limited on the basketball court? Um, from eight A M. to nine P M.?
To what?
Eight A M. to nine P M.
Well, for what, basketball?
For basketball. Uh, if it's gated, it can be locked.
Okay.
Um-
I mean, even if, if it's limited just to daylight hours or something, but, you know, you used to have at nine P M.
Nine P M. in summer.
Yeah, 'cause we're looking, it's only eight thirty now.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now we go to my next question. I know you're ready for this one. What does Plan B, if Templeton denies?
Um, if Templeton denies, um, I, I don't know that there is a Plan B yet, but I would imagine, um, we would have to either reduce the number of units, because we'd have to look at reducing the building, or we would have a, a much closer construction. Either way, if Templeton denies and a modification is required, um, I would expect that the decision of the board would be that the, um, construction conforms substantially to the plan that is submitted, unless we have to be back here for a modification.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, I wanna go ahead. Your forty-seven parking spaces. Where's Mister Forty-Eight?
I believe, um, pushing back or adding right here would be appropriate, um, or on this side, but on this side, um, we would, uh, by a couple of feet violate the fifty-foot bound, uh, boundary.
Okay, and I mean, that, if I understand your fifty-foot buffer is sort of, that is what we'll do?
It's, it's our offer of, um, a way of making this feeling better looking.
Okay. If you do add a Forty-Eighth space, you know, please update the plan, and so we know where it is and find it. Just a more informational, what is the price range of the condos going to be, approximately?
And that's, I'm gonna ask Mr.-
Well, right down across the building will hide, so we are there depending on the goal we're after about. So, we will be around two fifty to a hundred.
Okay.
Because of, um, the way the road is.
Yeah, I'm just sort of trying to tie in what you're saying, is what she was stating.
The rent, the rent is gonna be, um, depending three dozens to that, as well as that, or about twenty-four eighty-nine, maybe nineteen hundred and fifteen, something to that, to more affordable.
Okay, and I think this is more of a statement, counsel. Uh, I think the Z B A is going to also confer with our city solicitor regarding like the Templeton agreement and a couple of other things, familiarity and go forward. So we make the contact with John Flip to do that, okay? I just wanna let you know.
We'd be happy to help in any way, if that is possible. Um, this has not been submitted to Templeton yet, because the primary, you know, parcel lays in gardener. Um, and so we did want to, um, before gardener first, um, and then bring it to Templeton.
Are you planning to have any conversations with Templeton before this board renders decision?
I, it's my expectation there's going to be at least another meeting, so yes.
Okay, and if you could provide us, you know, an update of how Templeton would be done?
Yes.
Okay.
All of the units are intended to be market rate?
Mr. Vanna?
Yes.
Market rate, yes.
Randy, any other questions at this point?
Not this one.
Michael?
No, no.
Okay. Uh, are there any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application?
He won't be this is part of the state.
I think I'm, I just wanna hold those by the file right now. Are there any other representatives to speak regarding this application? Are there any abutters present who would like to speak in favor of this application?
In favor, no.
Any abutters present who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any abutters present who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Sir, please state your name and address.
Patrick Richards, Deer Hill Road, Grand Mass. I have many, uh, I have many, first of all, I, I just speaking, I'm just speaking in Patagonia. I live right downhill from that property. They're talking about snow, snow, uh, snow storage, which is gonna melt, right downhill onto, onto, uh, just a deer, onto Deer Hill Road. Another concern I have, I just invested thirty-six hundred dollars on my well, and I fear that once, once that they start to dig up there, and probably have, probably, uh, didn't take a lot, it's going to interfere with my well. That's my concerns, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other abutters who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Are there any interest, interested parties who would like to speak, and I'll say the for or against this application? May I ask a question regarding your last statement? Please, may I ask a question regarding the last statement? Do you have, on your topo map, does it show the, the elevation change between the locus and Deer Hill Road?
I believe that Deer Hill Road, uh, so, these are the Deer Hill Road lots are A and B doors. It's just, it's, so this is a corner.
I'm at, uh, I'm at forty-two.
Oh, I see.
Is that the second or third house on the right?
Third, third house on the left.
On the left, okay.
What is the elevation at the corner, turn?
The elevation at, um, the closest I can get is, uh, nine sixty-six on this line right here.
Okay, so it's very similar to the, to Route Two A in front of the locus.
Correct, it's straight, it's straight.
Of course, of course, the snow falls there now and melts now.
The, the snow that falls melts in, you know, you're talking about the storage and snow. That's powerful, you know?
Same amount of snow. We just pile it up, we just pile it up. We just pile it up, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Question.
You have a question, Mike?
I have a question. Why, why did you opt to go for the use of areas, variance? I have a letter from the community development and planning office that seems to believe that, um, the smo- smart growth planned unit development requires specific density dimensional parking and other requirements, and would require the applicant to secure a special permit through the planning board. And that would have triggered site plan review and all of that, so, why did you opt for us versus planning?
Um, why am I thinking of?
I see she called that.
That didn't get you anywhere.
Okay. So with a big project like this, um, it sometimes takes several steps through development to look at, um, what's the right solution. Um, the proposal that comes before the board today, um, was relatively light in cost on the engineering work. And if there is, um, such opposition from the board, um, that the site is not developable, um, the request for a use variance should reflect that in the opinion of the board, um, whether it's denied or allowed. So it was, uh, this is a lower cost way to, um, gauge the acceptability of the project to the city. Um, certainly, open space development, uh, also has not yet been used as planned, or the planned unit development has not been used yet in gardener. Um, and while I would look forward to being the first one to use that, um, it's not always the best legal choice for the project. And if the use variance is denied, we may be back here, or really to the planning board, to, um, be the first people to use that.
Thank you. And it goes to site plan review either way.
I'm sure.
The smart growth plan development requires, um, some commercial, uh, units in this, in this development, which, again, where everything around it is residential, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense.
It matches the zoning district, but not necessarily the actual use of this surrounding road.
Okay. We can hold on to that. So I did ask if there are any interested parties of the speaker regarding this application, and that was before Mister Gary had his question to put on the floor, so I'll ask it again. Are there any interested parties that like to speak regarding this application, either for or against? Haven't noted, there are no takers on that? Randy or Mike, any other questions at this point? I definitely, uh, turning tree, would love to schedule a site visit for this, to get an idea, to look at the property. Uh, if you can mark off where the entrance and egress is going to be. And I know, I'm not gonna ask you to mark off what the building locations are right now, because I think one of your abutters is pretty close to laying on top of that at this point. If, and I'm not sure what the terrain is like, but if there might be a spot, two, three rays of orange of, here's the Templeton line, so we can see where it is relative to, okay? Anything else? But I do not wanna close this case tonight, I do wanna keep it open. So we will do the site visit, and then we will reschedule a continuance, and it'll be an open case. Okay? Alright, um, so I'm just asking for quick notes to continue this case to, you know, and I'll say-
October.
It's gonna have to go to October, because of the lack of members for September. It's okay, do I hear a motion to continue this case to the October hearing?
It's almost seven.
Okay, any further discussion? None all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Case continued to October?
Letter.
Okay.
Mister Chair, would you like to schedule a site visit now, or would you like to, uh, schedule that until the end of the year?
Me for a site visit, I mean. What's your schedule look like, you would?
I, I would imagine if it were, uh, we have two months before the next meeting, um, if it were two weeks or more out, then we could have a better chance of getting an engineer back to market.
Yeah, I was gonna say plus, you know, conversation with your client. And there are some open questions, and you could have that data. Detailed document is submitted to this board for inclusion into the file, and I think it'll work very well that way, so. Let me ask you for a timeline in terms of, you need two weeks, four weeks?
Uh, as far as the, uh, having all of the rest of the documentation prepared and having that ready to, to look at of the site, there's a valid proof that we may be looking at, probably timeline. Mister Vanna, would you agree? Yes.
Okay. So if you could submit a couple of days and times, and, you know, like, Randy's not available till roughly six o'clock to six thirty at night, so I try to do this at thirty for him, but on a Saturday or Sunday, if you have, preferably not Sunday, but if you have some dates to throw out in times for a Saturday, and then we'll have, uh, a blue book to choose from. So we'll find out what schedules, because we're still in the vacation season, and we'll see what happens, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, so we will give you a minute to get your things organized.
Sure, turn me to you.
And I'll call the last case. Okay. Alright, the next case before the board, case number two oh two one dash oh eight dash oh two, Jesse Chason, two sixty-two Elm Street access driveway. Application to construct a second driveway at two sixty-two Elm Street, Garden Mass, Cross Y D, R twenty-two dash thirteen dash forty-three, located in the single-family residential one zoning district, S F R one, is denied as it does not comply with chapter six seventy-five dash seven twenty C two. Each parking area may have one additional access driveway for each two hundred feet of frontage, provided that all access dri- all such access driveways shall be at least two hundred feet apart on the parking area, measured from the center line of each access driveway in the city code of garden. Your plan shows less than two hundred feet from the current driveway. Jesse Chason, agent or attorney.
Present. Jesse Chason, good evening, board.
Good evening.
This is my wife, Paula Chason.
Good evening.
Very simply, and in the packet that I provided the board with the application, I addressed the three situations of the variance. This was a driveway that we inherited when we purchased the home. Uh, it was put in, to the best of our knowledge, without the proper permit. Uh, it was originally sold to us by the seller's realtor as a usable driveway, which then became a nonusable driveway. Uh, there was an agreement, I imagine, with the building commissioner to curb it or go through the proper procedures to be in front of you. Uh, the owner that we bought the house from, one William Cottonis, elected to put a curb in front of it. And when we purchased the home, we do have a shared driveway with two sixty-eight Elm Street, with the Walgrins, Jim Walgren, our abutter is present tonight. Uh, I did provide the board with a signed letter both from the abutters at two sixty-eight Elm, as well as the abutters on the other side, in favor of this variance. I also addressed in the letter before you the, the three requirements. The first one, the literal enforcement would involve substantial hardship owing to soil condition, shape, or topography, apologies. Uh, the driveway was already in existence at the time of the sale of the house. Uh, it would incur significant financial expenses to remove it, not including removing the existing pavement, whatever the supporting materials underneath it is. Also, when we did purchase the home, we learned the hard way that there are extensive tree roots under there, because we needed to call a rotor ruder to the sewer, uh, pipe there. Uh, we also had another issue with the sewer pipe, not, uh, it was, it was in the house, it wasn't necessarily related to this, but my fear is that, uh, it could potentially damage something and get very messy very quickly. Uh, the second requirement, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or creating or aggravating a safety hazard. My argument led before you is not only would it not create a safety hazard, it would potentially eliminate a safety hazard that we have noticed, uh, over the past year, uh, almost a year and a half, April, right? Since we purchased the home, because currently we have the shared driveway with the Walgrins. Whenever there's a U P S, or even the, the post office, they, they park in front of this driveway that we're here tonight to discuss, and put on the hazards, thus blocking off Elm Street, which as I know you know, is only a one-way either direction road. And our argument is that especially during the day while we're at work, we would always remain, uh, one car access that the driveway itself is, is above, the width of two cars comfortably in front of the house, as evidenced by the, the block line there. And then anybody who is to deliver or visit or need access to either one of us would just be able to pull into the driveway rather than put on the hazards and block traffic in front of the, the house. And then the third requirement that was addressed, desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating the intent or purpose in this code. Uh, I wrote in this letter before you, chapter six seventy-five dash seven twenty C states that quote, "Each parking area may have one access driveway. The existing shared driveway is the only access for two sixty-eight Elm. The proposed variance would be a second driveway for us at two sixty-two Elm, due to the property line being in the middle of our shared driveway." The code states that quote, "Each parking area may have one additional access driveway," end quote. This is what is being petitioned by the city. The variance is regarding the requirement of two hundred feet of frontage between driveways. The driveway in question is in accordance with chapter six seventy-five dash seven twenty C parentheses three, as it is more than five feet from the property line. The situation that is contrary to the usual rule is the number of feet of frontage between access driveways. I'd be happy to address any questions or comments about-
First of all, ask my members if they have a question, Randy?
So, did I understand correctly that there was an existing driveway there that was constructed at some point? Besides the shared driveway, the one you're seeking today, there was an existing driveway there?
Yes, there was. It was constructed, to the best of our knowledge, by the-
Is it paved?
It is paved. Ask them. By the owner, the previous owner, William Cottonis.
You don't know, you don't know when that was, you have no idea on that?
It was, so he, he owned the property, or maybe Jim can speak to this, 'cause you were there.
Please state your name, German address.
My name is James Walgren, and I reside at two sixty-eight Elm Street. Abutters of Jesse Chason. Uh, the temporary, or the driveway that we're talking about was, they bought in April of two thousand and twenty.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this person had that property, I believe, for six to nine months. They purchased it in the sole purpose of improving it and turning it over.
Flipping.
And he thought by putting in this driveway, it would improve the, uh, saleability of the house with having a, another driveway access to that property, as well as our shared driveway. So the person that flipped the house, put that in without going through the proper channels, uh, and authorities, and- And the building commissioners group came by and they saw this extra driveway and an extra cutout, and didn't find any permits for it, so they gave him a cease and desist and at least finally thought, can't use that property to, or that driveway to park vehicles, either for a short term or for a short period of time, really. And then the second point, that temporary berm that was put in by the previous owner, it has since deteriorated to a point of a safety issue for people walking up to, up Elm Street, and it's unnecessary, as far as I'm concerned. We have no problem with...
The board, Jim's going to take a look at it. Now, just in reference to Mr. Haglund's question, looking at your drawing, and that's why I'm even a little confused, I see on the right-hand side, it says driveway. Is that your shared driveway?
Correct.
Okay, now, on the left side, it's handwritten in driveway with an arrow going...
I apologize for the state of the quality of the property. The arrow is pointing toward a colored-in block, kind of blending into one of those trees there. That is the driveway in question.
Okay, so that is your proposed new driveway.
Correct.
Okay, I thought it was part of the property at first.
The trees are not in the way of the driveway.
Okay, okay. All right, that was just clarification. Okay, Randy, you may continue because...
No, it's all in.
Okay, Michael? No? You know, I mean, I think your application is, it's pretty simple, you know, what I was looking at, you bought something with a problem that you weren't aware of. But I think the board would definitely, I'm jumping ahead a little bit, I'm going to go through my thing, but will definitely want to come out and take a look at this. And if you can mark off where you want to put your new driveway.
How wide is it?
About twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet wide?
Mm-hmm.
Two car widths?
And nothing fancy, you can use four rocks if you want.
The actual driveway is in existence right now.
Oh yeah, but this one...
It's paved, asphalt.
No, it's there. There's just now a berm in front of it, right?
Yeah. Yep. That color is swathed, it's already paved. It was paved by the previous owner. Curbed, see turds.
It's a crumbling curve.
Okay, anything else you'd like to add?
I believe that's all.
Okay, so is your wife, would you like to add anything at this point?
No, I just appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Gary, any questions? Any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Mr. Jean?
I'd just like to verify for the board that Mr. Walgren's statement was very accurate as to what happened and that the new owners have been, have been good about coming forward to try to make this right.
Instead of just letting it go, understand?
That's all, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other city officials to speak regarding this application? Any abutters to the property who would like to speak in favor of this application? Mr. Walgren, if you want to add a little more, you can, if you feel comfortable what you gave.
I think what I have said is, pretty self-explanatory, and if you have any questions to me, I've been there for forty-five years and...
Okay. Are there any other abutters who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any abutters who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Any abutters who would like to speak in opposition to this application? No opposition for the record. Are there any interested parties who would like to speak, either for or against, regarding this application? Any interested parties who would like to speak, either for or against, this application? You have known there's no one to speak, either for or against? I have no further questions. Randy?
When you're closing, did you get a taped survey or a mortgage plan or anything?
So I believe your office reached out about that last week. And we reached out to our lawyer who did the closing and were directed to this, albeit not a great quality map. This was the map we submitted with another project that required a permit of the building commissioner to sign off earlier, and he said that this was sufficient.
Well, so technically, it was a zoning issue missed.
It was a zoning issue identified by the former owner, and in the interim, we asked that he block it off until he came for zoning relief, and what he did was turn around and sell it.
Okay, fine. Okay, all right, then, there's no further questions. Thank you for your presentation, and we'd like to come out and just, it's not going to take long, can we take ten minutes? And we view it, what is the best time for you?
Can you give us the time?
Yeah, I'm home every single day, so.
Glad you called me.
I'm around any day.
At the board's meeting.
What are your times for this Saturday? Randy?
This Saturday, I'm open. I guess you're not there. I'm wide open on Saturday.
You are? And what time would be good? Saturday's good for us.
The earlier the better, but any time on Saturday, we'll both come with...
We don't talk early.
I normally work Saturdays, so early can be very too early.
Nine o'clock, okay with you guys? Randy?
Yeah.
Nine o'clock on Saturday?
My book works on the Saturdays.
Okay, we'll be there.
Thank you very much.
Are there any questions or anything that, I think, move forward to close this case? No, I'm going to leave this open. I'm going to leave it until where they are and take a look, see if there are any, excuse me, other alternatives, and then we move forward and close it and move forward.
I do have a question before we close the meeting. Are you still going to share the driveway with the Walgrins? Are you still going to use it, do you expect?
Yes, that is the plan because there is also another single-car driveway on our property further down with the only access going from the street through the shared driveway.
Okay.
It's a single-car garage, that the only way to get to is that shared driveway.
Okay, I remember that.
Okay, all right. Okay, then, as I said, I'm not going to close this meeting. I'm going to ask for a motion to move the continuance, you know, to that next month to, like I said, we've got to do October. Most we could pull a special year, but then you've got to do posting and everything else, so is October okay?
That is the earliest time, the earliest time.
Okay, per your motion, move this to the October meeting or continue it?
No, it's fine.
I do have a quick question. If you come out on Saturday and it like looks good to you, we still have to come back in October or...
The what?
Okay, I'm just trying to figure it out.
It'll be fine. Okay, any further discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? None, can vote continue to the October hearing?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give me a minute to follow.
We're not doing one of these, you did one of these before?
This is personal.
Well, you did, okay.
Okay. Tried following instructions.
Probably. Not everybody does.
Sorry, sorry.
Rachel, do we have any minutes or anything?
We have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this moment, our time, we have some minutes to be signed.
You don't sign them.
Have these been approved, Rachel? No?
We will, tonight.
You've all had them two or three times, so.
God knows.
Have I looked at them?
Oh, here's some minutes. I can't run any of these.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm Mr. Island.
I think we need to vote on these minutes though, right?
Yep.
Okay. Sign them, then we'll vote them. Okay, now, before the board, you've had minutes from the July twentieth, twenty-first meeting and August third.
Site visit.
Huh, site visit?
Did we vote on the site visit minutes for the twenty-seventh? I don't think we ever did.
No, that now he was done before this meeting, so, or you said she was like aligned, I don't know what we talked about.
Basically the same thing, yeah. Okay.
All right, so I'm presenting the minutes for August third, two thousand and twenty-one, and July twentieth.
Motion to approve as printed.
Hmm?
Motion to approve as printed. Second.
Any further discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, minutes approved?
You've got another set of minutes.
I do. I thought I read that one.
No, you did this one, August the third.
Okay, next set of minutes, July twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve as presented. Second it.
Okay, any discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No opposition, approved. And I think, Rachel, that's all you gave us in the packet, is these two sets of minutes? No correspondence or anything came in? Okay. Then, since we're closed, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Second it.
You made the motion, Randy?
I'm sure.
You're going to second? Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye. All opposed? No opposition, meaning adjourn.